Of the 200th anniversary of the birth of Willy Holbarry, I'd watch the Holbarry Suite by Edvard Greig here on Classical K U S C. In about one minute, we've got more music for you with Jim Trader. My name is Rich Camperella. It has been my pleasure. Let's do it again tomorrow, shall we? Starting around four in the afternoon for more of the same, weather permitting. The time, one minute before seven.
Fall is a great time to donate your car to the K U S C Vehicle Donation Program. We'll take care of all the details and the proceeds benefit K U S C. One eight seven seven five eight seven twenty two twenty seven or online at kusc.org.
Looking for a great night out? A trip to the ballet, the opera, or the symphony? We can help with the K U S C Events Calendar, made possible by our friends at PerformingArtsLive.com. Just click on Events at kusc.org. You're listening to Southern California's classical station, K U S C Los Angeles, a listener-supported radio station and broadcast service of the University of Southern California, home of the USC Pacific Asia Museum. Classical K U S C is ninety-one point five FM and HD one in LA and Orange County.
Welcome to the City of Seal Beach Planning Commission of October sixth, twenty fourteen. We'll call the meeting to order. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nature and by law, and with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Steve Song, here. Commissioner Esther Cummings.
She's absent.
Vice Chair Robert Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Patty Campbell.
Here.
And Chair Sandra Masalavich.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to excuse Ms. Cummings? Second.
Second.
Please vote. Okay. Thank you very much. Four to zero. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda. Rearrange the order of the agenda and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there any item that the Planning Commission would like to see reordered? Since there's only one item, really? Okay. We'll move on. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. This is the point on the agenda where people have the opportunity to speak who do not have something on the agenda. So if you're here for something other than Taco Surf, or is it Surf Taco? Taco Surf. I've lived here for my whole life and I've never gotten it right. I'm always backwards and my kids always correct me. Anyone here to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Good evening, Chair Masalavich, Commission, members of staff and the public, Seth Ecker. Just wanted to share with you also some exciting news about the Seal Beach Police Foundation. We're having our first annual inaugural golf tournament on November seventeenth. Our Cops Are Tops with holes and we've got some great sponsors that are already on board. And it's, the Police Foundation just for the Commission and the public's information is really to provide additional supplemental resources to the police, not covered under budgetary items, nor is it meant to replace budget line items within the city budget. It's really designed to provide supplemental resources in three major categories. Homeless liaison outreach, so that if there was a homeless family in a car, right now there are only certain primitive actions that the police can take. Instead, we might partner with another nonprofit organization and be able to deploy some resources in a credit card to get them into a place like, let's say, Seaport Marina Hotel for a week so that they can be connected to county or Long Beach City resources. Number two, an area of focus for us is also on working with the elderly population, particularly the leisure world population, and making sure that we penetrate into that population more effectively as the Seal Beach Police Force. So an ominous bidman that we're hoping to fund to do more elder care and elder outreach with the Police Department. And finally, we're doing some fun projects like looking for an antique police vehicle, like an eighteen twenties cop car with the dome lights and stuff, so that we could have something as a showcase with events like National Night Out, SERC trainings, neighbor-for-neighbor events, and other community-wide events that would be a heart and an activity to center things around. So I just wanted to show the Commission the good news about that event, again, November seventeenth at the Seal Beach Country Club. We're really excited in District Four to be doing that, and we hope that we will see you. And for more information, sealbeachpolicefoundation.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Great effort. There's one item on the consent calendar this evening to approve the Planning Commission meetings of meeting minutes of July sixteenth. Can we have a motion?
No.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote. Oh. Did I hit the wrong one? No.
I hit the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Okay. So it's, it's four to one, it's four to nothing.
I meant to abstain.
Four to nothing.
You abstaining?
You are abstaining?
Abstaining. I wasn't present.
You weren't here? Okay. So it's three to one with one abstention.
Fine.
Thank you. There are no scheduled matters, and so we'll jump right into the public hearing. This is conditional use permit fourteen dash five at one six two eight one Pacific Coast Highway. Could we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Tonight's application is for CUP fourteen dash fifteen, requesting live entertainment in the form of two unamplified musical performers in conjunction with a type forty-seven alcohol license within an existing restaurant. The subject site is a fifteen thousand two hundred square foot lot developed with a restaurant located on the south side of Pacific Coast Highway near Anderson Street. The restaurant is served by onsite parking and surrounded by commercial to the east and north across Pacific Coast Highway and residential uses to the south. The restaurant currently operates with a type forty-seven alcohol license, which permits the on-sale of wine, beer, and spirits within the restaurant. The subject site is, the restaurant on the subject site has been in operation since nineteen sixty-eight and has changed ownership at least one time when, according to city records. The applicant is now requesting live entertainment to allow two musical performers with no amplification. The approval, excuse me, the proposal is to utilize an existing stage area in the north side of the building adjacent to the front entrance near Pacific Coast Highway. The Seal Beach Musical Code permits live entertainment limited to two unamplified performers, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. The existing restaurant has operated under the current ownership for sixteen years and has daily operating hours of eleven AM to eleven PM. The Seal Beach Police Department has reviewed the applicant's request and has stated there's no history of subsequent calls for service at this location, so they do not have concerns regarding this request for live entertainment. The applicant's request for live entertainment does not include the addition of new floor area to the building, and therefore will not impact the existing parking or parking requirements. The restaurant management has posted signs in the parking area that read, "Quiet, please. Our neighbors are our friends." The restaurant owners have also agreed to maintain all exterior windows and doors closed from six PM to closing on a daily basis. The restaurant has a rear door that exits to a small enclosed patio behind the restaurant. Management has also agreed to maintain this door closed after six PM. The applicant has agreed to put these items as conditions of approval for the conditional use permit. Seth has also included a condition that states the rear door leading to the rear patio must be provided with an alarm to notify management if the door is opened after six PM. In addition, a condition has been included to require all exterior doors to remain closed during all live entertainment. The live entertainment hours are proposed Friday and Saturday from six PM to nine PM and Sunday from four PM to seven PM. The restaurant is requesting a live entertainment permit, again, for two musical performers with unamplified music. The approval of this request will include rescinding all prior entitlements on the property. Again, the property has been in operation since nineteen sixty-eight with various ownerships and has acquired four entitlements up to this date. All conditions previously applicable to the operation of the restaurant with a type forty-seven alcohol license were included in the draft resolution for the CUP application. After conducting the public hearing and receiving testimony, Seth recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution number fourteen dash seven, approving CUP fourteen dash five to permit a restaurant use with live entertainment and a type forty-seven alcohol use. One mutation that Seth would like to make, there was a typo in the resolution. Condition ten of the proposed resolution, we would like to correct to read, "The rear door leading to the rear patio must," and U S T, there was a typo there, "be provided with a self-closing alarm door so that management can be alerted if anyone attempts to open the rear door." And with that, this concludes Seth's report.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the staff? Nope. Would the applicant like to come up and speak to us? Tell us a little bit about what they've got? What they intend on doing? Although I know it's been going on for many, many years.
Part.
The entertainment.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for letting us come in tonight, hearing us out. Yeah, you're correct. We have been operating under, I guess now that we see a very vague CUP over all these years, you know, it's stated that we were to have Polynesian entertainers and different things. And I guess by our ignorance, we've just kind of worked off of that. We've always closed our doors when the entertainment started from six to nine o'clock. Due to some air conditioning issues, I know that we've had the doors open and I'm sure some noise has gotten out. And, you know, for that, if we affected anyone in that way, we do apologize. Since then, we have invested into a nice new air conditioning system and we've baffled our doors and windows and we put up the signs so that our customers do know that, to be aware of their quiet, you know, for our neighbors. And all of our staff is very aware of what's been going on, you know, and financially, everyone's been affected pretty bad. I mean, it's been pretty devastating to operate sixteen years in one way and then all of a sudden, you know, the rug's kind of taken right out from under you. So it's been a challenge and we've done everything that we've been asked to do to try to make that an airtight situation for our neighbors. And I know for a fact that even with this new CUP and the clarity and whatnot, it's still going to be quite a financial challenge for us, you know, trying to climb back out of this hole that we're in. But I just want, you know, the council to know that we never went outside the boundaries of what we thought, you know, we were doing was right. We would have never maliciously done that. I mean, we've made good money, we've paid our taxes, and everyone benefits from that. And we just hope to get back on our feet again and have the opportunity to maybe recoup some of all of these losses. I hope that the Surfside community will see that we've done our best to make, you know, right the wrongs and we can go back to conducting our business the way it should be.
Well, thank you for cooperating. And, you know, it's an honest misinterpretation, maybe? And there really isn't anything punitive here that we're going to do. So why don't we just take some testimony? Is there any, are there any questions from the Commission to the owner?
Were there any complaints regarding noise from the residents? Any complaints from the residents regarding the noise? When you were, when you had live entertainment?
Like full entertainment, you know?
Yes.
No. I mean, in fact, I would say a large majority of the colony is in our restaurant, enjoying the live music. And they, and they pretty much have for sixteen years.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's some folks here that can tell you some of their experiences over the years and how beneficial it's been, you know, for them and their lives and their relationships and whatnot. So.
It's hard to believe that it's been there sixteen years.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions of the owner? No? Okay. Is there anyone who, here, who would like to speak against this project? And I, so therefore, I assume everyone else here is in favor of granting this conditional use permit. And in order to judiciously use our time, you don't all have to come out and speak. We get the hint. So is, there aren't, if there aren't any questions from the staff or from the Commission, maybe it's appropriate to make a motion? Well, before we do that.
I'm starting to run. Can you ask me? Would it be okay?
Of course you can.
Although I am here to be very realistic, but absolutely. They're writing.
Oh, okay.
What is that?
Then don't let me keep you from emoting.
First of all, thank you for having us and for doing this much.
Excuse me, could you just please take your line for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kenny Wetzel. I'm a professional musician and I have been performing at Taco Surf for close to fifteen years, I think. But I want to say right up front that I was not asked to come here by Todd, by ownership, by anyone. And unlike the employees at Taco Surf who are really getting hit in the wallet because of this, this doesn't really affect me financially. My band works a lot, so it's not, I'm not here to beg and plead because I need to get the paycheck. The strange thing about Taco Surf is it's an orphan parcel. We know that it's right at the south end, the tip of Seal Beach. Strangely enough, you throw a rock across the street and you head down to Beachcomber, which is a completely different zone, and I always found that kind of funny. If you drive one mile south down PCH, you get live music all over the place. Many of these places, which are fantastic, and I've played at them, play music later in the hour even, from nine PM to one AM. The thing that I've always loved about Taco Surf is they are very cognizant of the effect live music has on neighbors. And they've always done six to nine, which I think is really amazing. But just, I just whipped out a list really quick. Down to Beachcomber, Pelican Isle, Bricks, May Dean's Irish Mist, Mothers, Schooners of Sunset, Captain Jack. All of these places have live amplified music. And they're all about an hour, excuse me, a mile south of Taco Surf, which I find is really funny. Now, if you go north up PCH, you drive a little, almost two miles over a bridge, and there you find light businesses. So it's always seemed funny to me that Taco Surf is more a part of this community than that community, even though the zoning doesn't say that. I feel like that the vibe of that street speaks to that. So if we, but even if we didn't take that into consideration, one of the questions I have, and I'm hoping you guys can help me with this or clear this up, is I know in Seal Beach, the regulations say there's no live amplified music and there's no dancing, which I think is kind of funny, it sounds like Footloose to me every time I read that. But there are clubs in Seal Beach that do allow live amplified music, and I've looked at three. Spagatini, Mahi, and Kobe Steakhouse. Two of three I've performed at. All three have live amplified music that go much later than Taco Surf. Many start at nine and go until one AM or midnight. And so I'm hoping you guys can help clarify that, like, why is one able to do it and the other isn't? And that would probably help a lot of people who sort of have the same question. That would be great. I don't know anything about grandfathering or things like that, but I think that sixteen years of giving the community fantastic entertainment, and by that I mean for children too, it's a really safe family place. I cannot tell you how many times I've handed a tambourine to a five-year-old kid or a seven-year-old or someone who's never sang with a band, and I bring them up and they sing, and the parents just have these amazing looks in their eyes. They just can't believe that their five-year-old son or daughter is singing with the band. And it's a beautiful moment for me, and that's why, me personally, this is so important because my life has been affected by what happens here. I proposed to my wife, that's how much I love Taco Surf, I proposed to my wife there, which some people think that's a little sick, but for me, it was, it was absolutely the right place to do it. My older brother died suddenly, and I took six weeks away from performing, and the only place I wanted to come back to was Taco Surf because it had that beautiful feeling of family there and community. We know that there haven't been any real issues with the police, the staff report says that. I can't speak to the noise element except to say that I think that traffic noise is probably a far bigger problem than live music. And I know what they've done to ensure that this will never happen in terms of live music affecting the neighborhood. And I know that the staff has been trained now to deal with noise issues if they become, if they become a problem. And speaking of the employees, these guys work harder than anybody. They work harder than the musicians, they work harder than anybody there. And it breaks my heart to see what they're going through financially. I bumped into one of the bartenders about two months ago who told me she cannot make her rent because business is so bad there. So I'm just going to end with this, and I'm sorry to be so corny, but, you know, it's, there are places you can go to see live music, and then there's a place like Taco Surf. I think Taco Surf is a shining example of Seal Beach. I think it's about community and it's about love and sharing. And I'll tell you something, when I'm up there and I hear people singing back to me as loud as they can, and you know that they've had a terrible week and they're coming there for a great meal and to be served some really cold beer, and it just becomes something bigger than music. It becomes a very communal thing, it becomes part of the community. So although I really, really do appreciate and I'm grateful for this meeting tonight to allow two unamplified acoustic guitars, I'm really, really hoping that we can maybe look at bigger picture. What can we do moving forward to ensure, or maybe provide, again, live amplified music at Taco Surf? Thank you very much.
Thank you. For someone who wrote out all those words, you didn't look at them once.
That's jazz right there.
Perhaps the Development Services, are you going to speak? Please come ahead.
Can I answer the question about? Hi. Just start? Okay. My name's Serena Maris. I'm twenty-five. Taco Surf as an establishment, over all the restaurants, is a year older than I am. My whole life has been off and on at Taco Surf. I've worked there, I've hung out there. All my friends who have worked there hang out there when they're not working because they love it that much. So it's almost like their paychecks recycle back into the restaurant. And I went and had dinner, I also, Kenny, I met my boyfriend at Taco Surf. I went in last Friday, and for the first time ever, I felt like the energy of the restaurant wasn't like it had been since I'd been going there since I was a kid. I think my first Mexican food meal was at Taco Surf, when I could actually eat. I, the first time I ever sang on a stage was at the Surfside location, just so you know, I sang My Heart Will Go On. I was like seven. So I just wanted to come from a place of being a youth growing up there and having fun with my family, dancing with my friends, walking from girlfriends' houses in Surfside with their family down to the restaurant, staying there and wanting to talk with the management because they're such kind, loving people. I also want to second what Kenny said, that I don't know how eventually we could get it to a point where we could have amplified music, but I just think the whole feeling and like, community feeling of being there, it was so quiet and it was so like this buzz of just like disappointment when I was in there the other night. It was so disheartening to see my friends who weren't busy. They could actually have time to come over and chat. And it was kind of sad because usually they're running around with their heads cut off, trying to get to everyone and doing a great job and making good money. And I remember getting tips so well there. And so to see everybody having this like frown on their face, it's just, it's really sad. And so I just wanted to come from a place of growing up there, loving the people, loving the food, loving the environment, and so I can keep going back to that place. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Tony Saas. I got a Taco Surf story. Four years ago, I met my wife. Kenny was playing.
What's going on here? Maybe we need another conditional use permit.
Kenny was playing, and two years ago, I got married to my wife, and we got, we rented out Water Tower, had Taco Surf cater, went down there, took the pictures behind the bar and all the stuff, and it was a big part of our life. We lived in the harbor, and it's, we meet a lot of family, a lot of friends. We bring the crank kids over there. Her father had his eightieth birthday there. Kenny was playing. So I tell you, it's just a fantastic place. It's, it has the vibe of Sunset Beach, and that's, that's the part of it that really makes it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, you saved it away with me speaking, Chairman Masalavich. Though I'm not empowered anymore, I was past president of the Chamber of Commerce and represented governmental affairs for seven years. And I didn't plan on coming to this hearing either, but I think it was important when I saw what it was, because we have a history in this big community, the greater Seal Beach community, to acknowledge kind of our differences and our quirkiness. And I think a lot of that is coming out in the testimony right now. And this sounds like an extraordinary venue with an extraordinary history, and I would urge the Commission, simply as a resident, to do all that it can to help this business flourish, survive, and be a part of our community for sixteen, one hundred and sixty more years because it sounds like they want to be here and we want them here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm really bad at speaking publicly, so if I don't look you in the face, that's no disrespect. It's just, I am a patron, Polathina is my name, and I'm a patron of Taco Surf for, oh my God, sixteen years. And I'm going to like quote the song from Cheers. You walk in, everybody knows your name, everybody's glad that you came. And all of the employees that work there are warm and soft and happy that you're there. You get great food, the chicken taquitos are above board, wonderful margaritas, but it's also a place that I know that I can go meet all my girlfriends and who've been surfing in Sunset Beach, and I know that they're going to be there. And it's just a great place, community. I feel, like I keep saying, loved and warm when I walk in there. And there's not that really, really that many places that make you feel that at home. And the music is key. It is key. We don't have to have it Monday through Thursday. We can, we can do like you said, the conditional use. Let's try little baby steps, like with my children. When they make mistakes, okay, I'm going to give you a little bit of trust, let you drive when I'm behind, you know, a sitting passenger. So we do little baby steps until we prove ourselves that we are warranted to not break the rules. So that's what we want to try to do. And, you know, give us a little bit of steps at a time and hopefully that you'll let us have the music because it's, everybody works hard, everybody at the end of the day, you know, Sunday comes around. hard, everybody at the end of the day, you know, Sunday comes around, football's over, you want to relax, you want to have a little bit of a dance, and that's all that matters, and that makes it the week that much better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Casey Coltrup, I'm a resident of Surfside, I'm also a board member, as I've spoken here before. I've got another board member here with me, and I gotta tell you, I'm here as both, resident, who's been to Taco Surf since they opened up, Knowles before that, I've been in Surfside for thirty-five years. And the sense of community from the political side is that everybody in Surfside loves Taco Surf. I mean, it's our spot, it's the only place in CUP that we can walk to, really. I mean, from Surfside, and we can go to Sunset, of course, but that's our walking distance. And just an informal poll of my residents and my fellow Surfside residents, is that Taco Surf has nothing wrong with it. We have no complaints that I know of, and I'm being on the board, you'd think you'd hear, oh, it's too noisy, or you got some doors, it's nothing like that. So I'm really surprised that there is not a CUP for amplified music, frankly, and so I would like to also see what we can do to get that going. Kenny's right, it's, there's not a problem. Adding AC, shutting the doors, the alarms, all that works, but it works for amplified music also, and so I'd like to put that out there. Again, Surfside residents have no problem with this, they love it, they want more of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rowan Oakes, I'm a resident of Huntington Harbor. I've been a patron of Taco Surf for sixteen years, and we have celebrated many family events there. This is the first year I haven't had my birthday at Taco Surf because of the lack of music. And I'm sad to say, and I apologize for being a fair-weather patron, when the music stopped, our entire group in the harbor stopped patronizing Taco Surf, so we feel badly about that. We'd love to get back there. I cannot second enough how important amplified music is. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Larry Moore.
And I'm Sergio Feinstein.
And I just wanted to go over a little bit of history. I think that Taco Surf here on Main Street, right here in downtown Seal Beach, has been there since nineteen eighty-six, if I'm not mistaken. So that's a lot of years as well. The Maris family also owned Kinda Lahaina, didn't you? And so two businesses right here on Main Street, as well as the Surfside location. So they've been a big part of commerce in this town for a long, long time, and they used to be residents here as well. My family has been in Seal Beach a long, long time. Nineteen oh-three is when we first moved here, and my great-grandmother was also a mayor of this city in the past, I'm thinking she might have been sitting here, I'm not sure, but. So anyways, you know, my point there is that we've, our family, maybe in fifth generation, we've seen a lot go on here, I remember well when that was Knowles Cafe. One of my points is that I think that the Maris family and Taco Surf, they have earned the right to have an edge on what's going on in that area. They don't have a fighting chance the way that it has been when their CUP was brought back to attention to correct it or take it away. All the other restaurants that have been mentioned there, me and my family frequent all of them, we can't eat Mexican food every night, so Todd understands this, we're good on it, but we go to the other establishments around there, and they have amplified music. And so they have an edge on what's being proposed here, and I don't, me personally, I don't think that that's fair, especially to a business that's supported this town for so long. And it seems that this came up with no complaints from the residents of Surfside, from what I gather, unless there's a secret one out there someplace that's not known, but I don't think so. So I just would like to see them get more than what's being offered here at this time, and I hope that that's considered as much as I would like to see it and the other people that have come before me and asked for that. Because they need a fighting edge on that to compete with the surrounding businesses, because their regular customers that they've had have walked across the street, walked down the street, all these places are in walking distance. And so I hope that you consider that if the request comes up.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna say this, I don't live here, I live in Huntington Beach. And we've had forty, fifty, sixty people get together on a weekly basis. Those are tax dollars that are coming into your city that we would spend now in Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley and surrounding areas. You know, so I look at it that, moving the business to your city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lawrence Zero, I'm also Surfside board member. Again, I have not heard from the people that there have been noise complaints, but what they want to bring out also, Taco Surf, their music starts at six o'clock, that makes it good for the families to get together, and by nine o'clock they're done. Or the other places the music start much later. When Taco Surf stopped having music, also Don and the Beachcombers got affected, because nobody who stayed with the Taco Surf to have, you know, dance and things like that or listen to music, they didn't even just come to that area anymore, so they, they used to go across the street from Taco Surf to Don to Beachcomber. Next thing you know, you started seeing a big drop off in Don and the Beachcombers people, and they were getting affected. So it has a cascading effect, is all I'm trying to bring out. And the fact that they do have their music start at six o'clock and end by nine o'clock, it does make it more family-oriented. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, we have a question.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Lawrence.
Barnes?
Lawrence.
Barnes.
Zero, Z-E-R-O.
Barnes. Sir, is your house on that map there?
Uh, just barely out of it, actually. I am right at the top, right there.
Like, right, right around here?
Yeah, maybe one inch of house is down there.
Okay. Can you hear the music from your house?
No. When I walk down there, and I get down to a balance. Well, I really, it's kind of muffled, like, right here, that's about it. When you come around here, you come in, right around here is when you hear the music.
Okay, there's a wall here, right? This is a wall?
Yes.
And that's like, eight-foot wall?
Oh, it's tall, yeah. If you get up opening there.
But, when you want to go to the restaurant, you have to go, you exit down here, is that right?
Yes, you walk, we walk right down, come around here, right there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. When you say you hear the music, what are we talking about? We're talking about amplified music that was taking place last month or a year ago or something? I'm at a loss here.
Well, it's like, when you're walking behind, behind a wall, it's very, very muffled, it's, you hardly hear it, you're right, that was about, you know, when they had music.
Was this a band?
Yeah.
How many pieces were in the band typically? Three, two or four?
Yeah.
And it was amplified?
Yes.
And there were no complaints at that time?
Not that I'm aware of. Usually the people who live right in that area are in Taco Surf. These are really close, and they could crawl home if they have to.
Thank you. And the other thing related to that, though, is that, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, but
By the way, I'm a full engineer with acoustic background.
Maybe Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the hours of operation for the three or four-piece amplified band were limited also.
Do you know what, from one to one?
Well, maybe Mr. Todd can.
Mine is six to nine, and it's been that way for sixteen years, I mean, we, for the simple thought of being one of the packer names.
Okay, so they've had amplified music, three or four people in the band, from six to nine for a few years, several years. Okay. I just wanted to put that on the tape, because your voice would not be picked up on the video. Okay.
My name is Kat Reed, I'm a local musician, I also play at Taco Surf. And as far as doing a two-piece, like, two acoustic guitar thing, first thing, that would eliminate me, because I don't play guitar, I play harmonic and I sing, so that, it kind of limits what you can do. And also, if you have a crowded room and two unamplified guitars and vocals, you won't be able to hear them. So only if there was nobody there, which is not what you want, you wouldn't be able to hear it at all. It would be pretty much lost. So if, I've worked at other places where we have to keep the music down, the Boathouse in Long Beach, we have a drummer that plays a minimized drum kit, it's actually his drum pads, we play right there, the sound is not too loud, this can be done at other places. Pelican Isle's doing the same thing right now, you know, bringing the volume down. So these can be done without taking away the amplification. You just wouldn't hear it, you know, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Madam Chair, before you close the hearing, can I ask Mr. Coltrup to come back to the, Mr. Coltrup, Casey?
Okay.
May he please come back? Mr. Coltrup, thank you for coming back. Is your house on that map, that photograph?
Mine's just out of range, I have probably another fifteen houses to the north of that.
Okay, so you're pretty much in the northern part of the development, then?
About the middle of the development, yes.
What is your impression in terms of the noise impacts on the immediately adjacent residents down here?
You know, I know three of them who live right in back of there, again, like Larry said, Lawrence, that they are mostly in Taco Surf too, it's not an issue for them at all. And I really am, I'm telling you the truth, we haven't heard any complaints at all to the board, so I'm really just mystified of what it is, you know, what people are talking about. When they have the door shut, and like I said, with the AC, they disinstall, I don't think you can even hear it, the ten-foot-high wall, and then you hear the noise of PCH going by, music is, you can barely even hear it even going on in there.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just showing this, this is a parking lot last weekend, so.
Saturday. Thank you.
Can you see the last one? Hmm. My name is Lisa Maris, I'm married to Todd. We've been together for twenty years, just about, and married for ten. The first year we got married, we lived above the restaurant. So the two windows you see upstairs, live music, six to nine at night. We have soundproof windows in that apartment, all I heard was the floor vibrating. I never was disrupted by sleep, I was never unable to watch television, talk on my phone. And we moved from there nine years ago, and since we've moved, I have celebrated every New Year's Eve with Kenny. And I've gone with my girlfriends, I have a five-year-old, and we take our kids, and we can celebrate New Year's and be home by nine fifteen. And it's a wonderful feeling, not only because it's my husband's restaurant, but I'm there with my family and my friends and my children, and I have celebrated every birthday there, except for this year. I turned forty-two and there was no music. So I just want to say, even living upstairs, it wasn't bad at all, and there's even someone up there that stays up every once in a while, and he doesn't even complain. I mean, even though there hasn't been music for a few months. So not even being on the other side of the wall, just being upstairs, it's not bad. Thank you. I just want you to know that.
Thank you. One more time.
My name's Tony Shawes. I go to Taco Surf quite a bit, and with the live music, and if you look at the picture right there, if you cut it half to the left-hand side is the bar area, and you go in there, you listen to the music, it's a little loud, but you can still talk when you're sitting at the bar, but if you go to the right, you can sit in the dining area, and that's the family section. And everybody's in there just talking, they're not yelling, you barely hear the music over there, so it's just fantastic. So you got to try to go into the music, have your kids over there, dance, and just relax, or you can go into the family section, and it's not blowing out your ears or anything, you can sit right, like this, right in front of the van, and just, ears are not bleeding, and you know, it's just, it's an awesome place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one last.
And I apologize, Commissioner Goldberg, you had asked earlier if somebody had heard, one of the residents of Surfside had heard loud music in the last month, two year. And I've been going there for at least, well, like I said before, years and years, but there has been no music at all, at all, for minimum of nine to twelve months that I can recall. So I just wanted to address the issue that you thought that maybe they were trying to play acoustically or something under the rules, but there's been no music. Because you had specifically said in the last month.
Okay, that wasn't my, I may have said that, but that wasn't my implication. But thank you for, you have clarified that the city's cease and desist order was nine months or twelve months ago, something like that. I didn't appreciate it was that long ago, so thank you for that.
Well, yeah, it's been a very long time, and I just heard you say a month to a year.
Yeah, because I didn't know that the cease and desist order was that long ago.
Okay, I apologize.
Thank you.
Staff have some, something to say?
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission. So this application was before this evening as a result of a cease and desist order, it's an active code enforcement case, is based upon noise complaints. We've been in communication with the management for Taco Surf for quite some time, and working with them to present a conditional use permit, that which is before this evening. The Minister of Health does state that there's no amplified music allowed, and it's probably based upon the 2010 zoning code that was done comprehensively, which had a massive overhaul of performance requirements, development standards, as it relates to rare stop uses.
And that's why there's no acoustic allowed now?
That's correct. Acoustic is allowed, amplified is not, yes.
I meant amplified, I'm sorry. Yes.
You believe that's one of the requirements, or the restriction was put in place?
I'm sorry, Jim, you said that there's no amplified music allowed anywhere in the city?
So our zoning ordinance currently does not allow it, yes.
So Mahi Mahi, for instance, does not have amplified?
So they probably obtained their permission or the CUP before the zoning code was overhauled in 2010.
Same thing for Kobe Steakhouse and Spagatini's?
Yeah, I would hesitate to comment on any particular application or any other particular business, we don't have the information in front of us right now, we don't look to the history, but that is the most likely scenario, is that they obtained approvals before Title I was enacted.
And Spagatini and Kobe, they're located in a specific zone that was adopted many, many years ago, and it's a Dixby Ranch family.
They'll also step back quite a bit from the residents of Rosmore.
And I think they had in the early to late nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety was the development agreement that was established.
With that whole development, Dixby Ranch? Uh, yes, come up.
In regards to the changes in 2010, I think had we known that we were not operating in that capacity, we probably would have come to the city prior to that to apply. But we were, figured we're operating on the up and up, we never had that opportunity. And as a statute of limitation may cancel out somebody's having to make good on a financial thing, it would seem that we've operated and paid our taxes and done well for the the community for so long that we could have been possibly granted that same permit as Mahi after all those years. But just to take it all away, not having a chance to even apply, doesn't seem right. We never heard about a 2010 zoning change or anything about that. If we, if we knew we were in jeopardy of possibly losing our permit, we would have approached and, and the city for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, before you leave, you're the applicant, right, or the proxy for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Um, you're familiar with the, uh, conditions of the resolution? There's sixteen, eighteen, twenty-five, twenty-four conditions. Is that the new conditions?
Yeah. You would have got a copy of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The CUP. Um, do you find any of these, obviously you do, which of these do you find unduly restrictive?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I don't have it memorized, I don't know.
Well, there's, there's the amplified music issue.
Uh-huh.
There is the two, two-performer limitation issue.
Uh-huh.
There's, there's keeping doors closed, whether there's entertainment or not in And, and a few others. Video games, et cetera. Do you find any of these unduly restrictive?
Well, I, I, I definitely feel what may be restricted is the, uh, the two, uh, unamplified, uh, entertainers. All the, all the conditions that you would like for us to, you know, comply to, we have no problem with. I mean, uh, decimal readings, outs, I mean, whatever we can do to make it, make it right for the city, we have no problem. But we do know that there's no possible way to make it, uh, financially right for us and for the community with two unamplified entertainers, uh, it just, it just won't work. We've proven that we can operate with a four-piece ban and, and still have no problem with the law enforcement or anything else. But we've made a lot of, well, all the corrections that were asked us to do. Lisa is, uh, our CFO, she actually handled a lot of the paperwork with the applications and permitting, uh, with the city here. Thank you.
Would you like to testify?
No, I just wanted to come up and, um, when he asked the question about, uh, the conditions here, because I've gone through all of them, I've been working with Crystal. And, um, the only one that we would have the problem with, obviously, is amplified music. We need the amplified music. So as I stated before, with the acoustic music, you really won't be able to hear anything. So I had came to the city, um, in a way of trying to grandfather it in, and we were told that this was the way that we had to do it. So, you know, we've been compliant with what you guys wanted, we've done everything, we've stopped doing the music when we're supposed to. Uh, but obviously, if there's a way, any way possible, which I, you know, spoke to the city already and said, is there any way possible that, you know, we could get this back or in the future? How would we know when things change again? Because we never knew this happened in 2010, so we just want to know what's going on ahead of time, so we can, you know, get what we need for our business. But, I mean, the amount of money that we've lost in the past couple of months is, it's really mind-blowing. And it's been six months since the cease and desist, since April, so.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Madam Chair. Um, Todd, were you provided with a copy of the complaint?
No.
No. We have no, we have no idea where it came from.
I asked for a copy of the complaint.
No, you won't get a copy if it has someone's name on it.
Or anything, yeah. I asked exactly what it was.
I'm wonder, wondering why the, you know, the person at complaint isn't here tonight? I don't, I don't know.
Todd, did you do a public record request for the complaint?
Sorry?
Did you submit a public record request to the city clerk for the complaint?
Uh, Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Um, uh, active code enforcement files are not applicable under Public Records Act.
So an individual does not have a right to see, uh, what the accusations are directly? Does not have a right to, to know the name of their accuser?
Right. Subpoenaed.
Um, and this commission, um, staff cannot share with this commission even a redacted copy, redact their name and try and take the name of the complaint, plain in a way? We can't, we can't see the nature of the complaint?
Commissioner Goldberg, I don't know what the point of that would be. We, the staff has told us that there's been a complaint. Why would we question staff's veracity? I mean, there's been a complaint. And that's, they're not going to lie to you.
My only question would be, where would that person live according geographically to our location? Would that truly affect them in any way?
I don't know.
So, Madam Chair, the, um, item listed before this evening is a conditional use permit that relates to a municipal code provision, a law, not a code enforcement action, not disclosure of a code enforcement action. It is whether or not the commission is going to grant the CUP listed before this evening.
I have a question now. Go ahead, I think, uh, Commissioner Sloan has something.
I was just going to repeat myself and ask, that code explicitly says that you're limited to two performers on amplified music. Is that correct?
That's what the code says. The code, the code says as an accessory to certain uses, you can have, uh, two performers perform amplified music. The code then later says that, um, amp, live amplified music is prohibited, flat out. It's, it, those are not conditions approved, those are actually code requirements that are just being written in.
How long has that code been in effect?
Four years.
Yeah, uh, four years or so.
So there's no amplified music in the city?
Only, yeah, maybe a special event permit.
Right, as, as, for, for permanent commercial uses, yes. But, but.
So there's no amplified music unless it's a special event permit in the city?
That's not necessarily the case. As we did, as we, as the planning director mentioned earlier, um, there are some existing uses that have prior approvals for amplified music going back before Title XI was adopted, before this code requirement was put into place. So they can continue operating as legal non-conforming uses.
So there's no way this can be grandfathered in for a trial of a year and see how it runs?
The, a code amendment will be required to allow it as a, uh, permitted or judicial permitted use. It's totally different process than what we have right now.
Mr. Seater? Can you give us the reference in the code? I thought it was in the report, and I can't find it, uh, the actual code sections that you were thinking of.
Just a moment ago.
I apologize, if that's in the report, I apologize, I thought I did see it in the report.
Can I say something also? I did inquire about a, uh, the special permits, or, what did you call it?
Special events.
The special events permit, and we were told that it would always follow our new conditional use permit. So even if we got that permit, we still would only be able to have the two unamplified musicians, so.
It would never be granted.
Yes.
A special event permit, ever.
Because you have to follow the...
What other establishments are there, uh, in that area? Because you're the only ones from Seal Beach. You happen to be. Um, I don't know, across the street, that's Huntington. Are there any other establishments similar to that that are technically in Seal Beach?
Mahi.
Hmm?
Mahi.
I'm talking about just right there, where you cross over on the bridge.
No, we're the last.
So you're in Sunset.
We're the first business as you enter Sunset.
Okay.
And the last one either way.
So you're, you're it.
Yeah.
Pat, excuse me, there's a, there's a business here. It varies, it changes ownership every couple of years, car sales, you know, there, there's a business here.
But this is a restaurant. We know what you're talking about. Restaurant, restaurant with alcohol and good food and...
And across, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Directly across the street is Don the Beach Comer, or, do they have amplified music on whatever you know? Um, just to clarify to the commission, all of those businesses are outside the city. They were previously part of the incorporated county, now they're part of Huntington Beach, so this, it, what, what the zoning is on those parcels is largely irrelevant. I, I understand.
Okay.
However, there haven't been any complaints from, about those businesses, and they haven't done anything apparently, uh, because of that, of...
Madam Chair, that's presumptuous, so we need to stay to fact-finding when we make statements of complaints and allege something that's not founded.
I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding the municipal code. Mahi Mahi, NSCs, others have, have amplified music, I believe.
Even there was an event on Main Street just this weekend with people up front, you know, with microphone out there in front of a really cute little flower shop, you know, which I love and I'm all for that. But I do know that it does happen in other places, so that's why it's a little bit confusing for us.
And I understand that they were grandfathered in, and, uh, that's the way it is in the municipal code.
Again, I, I don't want to say for sure, because the history of those sites are not in front of us. That is my best, um, surmise about why those, how those businesses are operating. And there's only a handful, and, uh, we're not talking necessarily about, um, live music on Main Street or Eisenhower Park, those are special events, handled through a special event permit process. Um, that process is not intended to operate with existing restaurants, rather than to churn out every weekend, have a special event with live music. It's limited in terms of the number they can do.
I mean, we're not looking for, uh, special permits, we're, we're just trying to stay alive. This is about life, every day. Um, and, uh, you know, building a business on sixteen years and, and having it, a big part of it cut out of, of the body of that restaurant, it's hard to live. I mean, it's hard, it's hard to survive. I...
You mean that they're the only establishment in that little triangle, which is technically Seal Beach? They're the only ones, and you really can't have any more. It wouldn't be precedent-setting to, uh, we, we're trying to find a way to do this, is what it is.
Madam Chair, if I may, the, the only way to move forward with amplified music, um, at this location would be a code amendment, change the requirements somehow to allow it under either a CUP or some other, uh, process. But the commission does not have jurisdiction tonight with regards to this application to approve live music that would be contrary to the requirements of the zoning code.
Okay. My question. When you looked at the old conditional use permit, the original, the one that's on this site now, and it said, um, Hawaiian dancing?
I have...
Polynesian.
Polynesian entertainers aren't necessarily acoustic.
It could be anything, just entertainers.
So if there is a, it's silent on whether it's acoustic or amplified, right? It's a, it's silent in the old conditional use permit. So is there...
Kenny had to wear glasses for... I look hard. I mean, seriously, if, you know...
If you saw my legs, you'd never give a...
Well, that may not be good for business either, Tom.
If we, if we put Kenny in the band in Hawaiian shirts, they'd be considered Polynesian entertainers.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, the original CUP for it when it was nulls didn't specifically state for entertainers, Polynesian dance, dancers. In nineteen ninety-eight, when Taco Surf took over, it specifically said no live entertainment as part of that conditional use permit. Looking back at the minutes from that meeting, live entertainment was a discussion item. At that point, the current, the new owner, which was Douglas, I believe, your father, chose to remove live entertainment and simply move forward with the alcohol, uh, the type forty-seven license. So at that time, when this was brought to the commission in nineteen ninety-eight, that was a discussion item, and it was chosen not to move forward with the live entertainment. At some point, maybe when it changed over, you took management, I'm, I'm not sure how exactly it happened, and we, we understood, staff's been working, uh, with your management who has been very helpful to sort everything out, but that, that's the current situation where we are. The Polynesian, um, the, the CUP which allowed the Polynesian entertainers is no longer valid. It's the nineteen ninety-eight CUP which only allows the type forty-seven.
Thank you, Crystal, it's very helpful. Crystal, do you have the month or the date of that nineteen ninety-eight public hearing? At least the month, so we can look it up?
You can't look it up now, how about if she gives it to you tomorrow?
I don't, I don't look it up now. I just, so, so members of the public can look it up at a different time.
Also, Crystal and I spoke, um, I mean, I'll tell a lot about this, and that CUP is really, really hard to understand and read. I mean, it's mixed in, I mean, we even talked about moving forward, it needed to be cleaned up, because, you know, not having read it and then ha, having to read it with the cease and desist order. I had, I had to read it a lot of times to try and understand what it even said. So if you look, when, when you look at it, you'll see all the different things that are in there. It was like it just kept, you know?
Was there any confusion regarding the live music? Or was that pretty clear that there was not to be any live music?
I pulled our CUP out of our files, and it still had the Polynesian information in there. Uh, that's why we're so confused about all this. Supposedly there was new CUP, our files, we had an old CUP, so when I say it was vague, we thought we were operating under...
It sounds like the controlling CUP is the one from nineteen ninety-eight.
That superseded.
Yeah, that's the one that, that is the controlling...
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Madam Chair, if I may, it was in June, June of nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Well...
In the background information, they, they say that, uh, if the, if the CUP is approved, our resolutions associated with the subject site will be rescinded.
That's correct, and that is also a clean-up item, so that this type of confusion doesn't happen in the future.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Exactly.
And we don't have the details here tonight, right, of what will be rescinded?
No, the original, um, there were four of them, the original, let me pull out those numbers. Ninety-eight seventeen, that's the existing, which permits the type forty-seven alcohol license. Ninety-two twenty-nine was an permanent extension of ninety-two eighteen, which permitted an outdoor patio area that is no longer, um, at that location. And resolution twelve twenty-three was the original CUP allowing type forty-seven and Polynesian dancers.
What was that number?
Uh, twelve twenty-three.
Twelve twenty-three.
Very old CUP.
Polynesian dancers or Polynesian, uh, entertainment?
I'm sorry, Polynesian performers, was the language.
Crystal, what was...
Which included musicians.
Polynesian performers was the language that I was saying.
I'm sorry, Crystal, do you have the CUP number from nineteen ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight dash seventeen.
Ninety-eight dash seventeen.
I'm sorry, that's the resolution number?
Let's probably get it figured.
I have a question. Um, Steve, you said about, the only way we could allow it now, we need to amend the code. Have there been any, and you may not know this, because you, you know, instances where the city amended the code, it really only impacts one business? Because we've done it before, can do it again.
It's not quite that easy, it's, it's...
I know, that's what I'm saying, it's that easy.
You, you cannot...
This, this impacts just one business.
Correct, so if you, you can, I would not advise the city ever to amend the zoning rules to apply to a single parcel that was, you know, particularly this size. Um, you'd have to do something more generalized. There's a requirement under the law called uniformity, zoning laws must be uniformly applied across their zones. So, um, this is in the general commercial zone, um, you'd have to, whatever new rule you put in place would apply throughout the general commercial. Now, part of the point of a CUP is to allow, uh, properties to be judged on a case, case basis, case-by-case basis, as a further refinement to zoning rules. So that's often how things like entertainment, um, alcohol are treated, so you look at each, each property, case by case. So, um, it would be unlikely we would ever, uh, uh, have a rule here that would only allow live amplified music at Taco Surf at this location and no other location. Um, other businesses would likely complain, um, and they might have a fair argument on that one.
So I know we had one instance back in nineteen sixty-eight, where the chief of police managed to get a law passed in Sacramento to allow him to do something over on the state lands. That goes back a long time.
Sixty-eight, some of these people weren't even born...
We're, we're trying to, uh, we're trying to do this, we really are, and we're just trying to see what's...
We're options.
Hmm?
We're exploring options.
Exploring options.
Yeah, we're exploring options, are we running out of them? Or is there...
Let me ask a question regarding exploring options. What about the concept of an overlay zone for that commercial area? How would that be possible?
An overlay is, is, is just, it's another zoning tool, but you, you can't just have an overlay zone that applies... zone that applies to one property, it's the same property. Overlay zones tend to focus on particular uses, and they'll say when certain conditions are met within, say, the general commercial zone, this other type of overlay will apply, and so it would normally apply in other locations too.
And there's someone here that wants to say something, and we still have an open public hearing.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to address you, and one thought I have...
Please give us your name.
I'm sorry, Nikki Wetzel, and it's not only the Taco Surf parcel, but really the current propane business next door, I'm not sure the aggregate of those two parcels, but I would ask staff in the planning commission to consider whether or not findings could be made based on the unique location and circumstances to these parcels that don't apply to other parcels in what I say Seal Beach proper, what I mean the other commercial businesses on the other side of the bridge, a mile plus away. I feel like these two parcels could be competitive in a commercial setting with the rest of the businesses down PCH, either amplified music, and they need, I don't know if you know, your code also prohibits dancing, in addition to the amplified music, but that's really sort of the feel of that section of PCH, so I just want to throw out potentially instead of, if it is going to upset the apple heart with the whole general commercial zone, a new zone couldn't be established for those two parcels based on the unique characteristics of their location. Thank you.
Seth?
I do not want to make the city attorney or staff mad at me, but I just thought I would ask, as I understand that in commercial zones and residential zones, there are two levels, there's a conditional use permit, and there's a variance, the variance has a higher legal threshold, and the variance findings are generally found such that it suffers a unique hardship, that is, prevents the property from being utilized in a way that other areas or other zones of a similar type could be used. Could a variance, instead of a CUP, be considered an action item here?
I can answer that, Madam Chair.
Please do.
Variances are limited to alterations or excuse and compliance with physical development standards. Use variances are not allowed.
Mr. Farrar, is there anything that this, this commission can do tonight to, to start us down a path of allowing amplified music at this facility?
Immediately, no. I mean, what you have before you is a CUP application for live unamplified music. In order for the business to begin operating music again, even at that low level, that would be the way forward, for the near term, for the business to move forward, have some entertainment. Now, whether or not the commission would like to come back at a later time in the discussion about live amplified music in the context of the broader zoning issues and not just Taco Surf, have a discussion to initiate that kind of code amendment, or at least request staff, you know, agendize a study session to begin to talk about the issue, but that doesn't, that, you can't initiate, well, you can't initiate the code amendment tonight, you can't take action on a code amendment tonight that would allow live amplified music, because that requires another hearing, it requires notice, and ultimately city council action to actually amend the code. Your discussion tonight is whether or not to approve this application. Denying the application would maintain the status quo, they could not do any music. Approving it would allow them to do some music, not as much as they said they wanted to do, but some music, and then the next step would be to come back and consider and talk about possibly allowing live amplified music under some circumstances in some locations, and figure out how to get that done, but that's not before you tonight and can't be done tonight.
And we can't even initiate that tonight?
Well, a formal initiation vote, it hasn't been put before you, but if you wanted to, you know, suggest that staff come back with a study session or something...
Agendize.
Yeah, we'd have to agendize that discussion and to begin the process.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we agendize that item so that we can come back and...
First, I think we need to take action on the case at hand.
And, Madam Chair, the public hearing is still...
I'm going to close the public hearing, that means you can't come up anymore. All right, why don't we, someone make a motion?
I have one more question.
On this conditional use permit.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
After the motion. I just, again, I'd like to ask the city attorney, can you disclose how many complaints there were in the complaint, perhaps how many residences, how many individuals?
I do, I do not know. I can tell you this, the way code enforcement works in the city, if we receive a complaint, we'll go look at it, and that's, and it was, once that happens, it doesn't matter how many complaints there are, because this is not a, it's simply, you find out this complaint, you go to the location, you find out whether or not the code, there's a code violation. So it doesn't really take more than one for any kind of code violation. Once we receive the complaint and investigate, one is enough because it's code violation. This is not a gray area, there's, live music is prohibited, so this is not being vindictive on the behalf of one individual or 10 individuals who are complaining. It's simply a matter of complaint and investigation, we don't go out and investigate without a complaint, but when we receive a complaint and investigate, we find a code violation, and a code that's been adopted by the city council, it's our duty to enforce the code.
All right, I understand that all you need to trigger code enforcement action is one complaint, I understand that, that's appropriate. I was just wondering for the record if, if either you or Director of Development can tell us, you know, it was one complaint involving three people or four residences or something like that?
I would hesitate to do so because code enforcement is not within the planning commission's jurisdiction.
This would be for informational purposes only, for individuals that may want to pursue this further through the city council, through their councilwoman?
All I can tell you is, I do not, I do not have the information, I can't give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. When the codes were changed that impacted their business, were there other establishments that were impacted, and if so, did the city notify those, or how did the people find out?
The process of adopting Title XI was lengthy, there were literally dozens of public hearings, it, notice was not sent to every individual property owner, every individual business, it was a massive undertaking. Fully one-third of this volume here is Title XI, it was vetted through just numerous, numerous public hearings, so there was opportunity for lots of people to participate in the process, I can't tell you that there was outreach to every single individual business because it's just not feasible.
I guess where I'm coming from on this is, how is someone to know, well, we know what the city council went through, okay, but for most people, to be honest, that are out there in Seal Beach, they have no clue what Title XI is, or what you guys did, or when you did it, they have no clue, because they just simply go about their lives, and when something like this happens, how is someone to know that something's been passed that's going to impact them or their business?
Well, that's a, that's a broader issue that has...
I know, but I'm just saying, in this, but in this instance, had they known, they would have come forward, made the appropriate, you know, requests, and...
Maybe not, because they were harboring the, the impression that they were allowed with their Hawaiian...
But had they...
So, you know, you can't use that to...
Justify it, I understand.
To help them singly, you know, when a city goes through the public hearing process to modify the zoning ordinance, it's published, it's, there are notices in the newspaper, I never read the notices in the newspaper, I don't expect other people to either, and so consequently, a lot of people don't know, and you can't send, you know, 26,000 letters out to everyone to let them know that there's some kind of a code enforcement or a zoning change, and half the people wouldn't know what it all means anyway, because it really isn't part of their life. It's not part of your everyday life, I mean, it is, it is, because you live in a single-family house, and it's in that zone, and your business is there, but, you know, it's just not something you think about, ordinary people don't think about this stuff.
Madam Chair, the code did not impact anybody who's operating as a legal conforming use at the time, because they would be allowed to go on.
That's right.
Probably here is that there was the CUP that was granted in 98 that removed the ability to use live entertainment, and so the zoning code didn't affect them in any regard when it prohibited live music, because they were already prohibited in terms of that CUP.
Yeah, right.
And that's come out, there was original statement that staff made to make it sound like this predicament was caused by the rezoning in 2011.
No, that's absolutely incorrect.
No, I say, that was a misstatement, that was a misstatement.
No, it was misstated by staff, it was based upon an inquiry by the public due to Chair for which we addressed, so it's not... The question is whether or not other businesses, why other businesses were allowed to do live entertainment, and the reason, they were operating legally, legal conforming at the time Title XI was amended or adopted, so that was the question that was posed at that time, not whether or not this business was operating as a legal conforming or legal non-conforming at that time, that's a distinct question, and so the direction is correct.
I just want to clarify, because Commissioner Campbell is under a misimpression from listening to what she was listening to, that the predicament we're having now is because of the code change, okay, and what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that the code change in 2010 did not, did not put them in the predicament, what put them in the predicament was the CUP from 1998 that gave up the live entertainment. And the code change in 2000, I don't want people to leave here thinking that, that if they had just been notified in 2010, that the situation would be different, no, there was some, maybe staff didn't say that, but there was some misunderstanding, you and I, okay, but just to clarify, you and I are now clear, and I want the public to be clear, that it was not a failure to notify them, the problem is the 1998 CUP, not the code change in 2011, just want to be clear on that.
Okay. All right, is there an action that the planning commission would like to take in the form of a motion?
Yes, I would like to move, Madam Chair, that we adopt resolution 14-7, approving commission use permit 14-5, work conditions.
Is there a second?
A second.
Please vote. Okay, four to zero.
A proposal CUP 14-5 is a final decision of the planning commission, there's a 10-day period to appeal this decision to the city council, the appeal period begins tomorrow morning.
Okay, and then the piggyback onto that.
I'm not sure what the correct verbiage is, but we would like to agendize a review of the municipal code.
Perhaps a motion to agendize a discussion of whether to amend a municipal code to permit live amplified music.
And, Madam Chair, I still haven't heard the municipal code sections that that applies to, maybe, maybe the city attorney can tell us now what sections we're referring to.
It is, Madam... Eleven point oh four, point oh five, point oh one oh, B two, C.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Everybody get that? Thank you.
All right, so your conditional use permit, as it stands now, has been approved, so you can have non-amplified music as much as you want, between six and nine.
Not for 10 days, correct?
Well, correct.
Correct.
Technically, yeah.
Starting tomorrow.
Yes.
Correct. Madam Chair, there was a motion from Commissioner Sloan to agendize further discussion, I don't know if there, I didn't catch if there was a second.
There was a second, and we voted four to zero, didn't we?
No, that was, that was on the CUP application.
No, we just did the one.
All right, we need a second on the agendizing the...
I'll second a review of the code section that we just heard about.
Okay, please vote. Okay, four to zero. Okay, that'll be on future agenda, next, not, the next agenda, whenever that comes out.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, so as I was saying before, you've been approved as it stands right now, and if it gets expanded, watch the noticing in the newspaper for a public hearing, look at the webpage, and/or make a phone call to the staff and find out if it's going to be on an agenda, okay? All right, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate all of you being here.
Thank you. Sure, Tom. Have a lot.
Sure.
We're still in the middle of a meeting, people.
Very much.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
But it's been this way for six months.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a director's report, please?
Madam Chair, can I take a poll as to how many commissioners are going to be here on November 17th? That's probably our next scheduled hearing item that we have that's coming before you. Do you anticipate everyone will be here?
It's not a holiday.
No, but it's getting close to Thanksgiving, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, so at least we have a quorum.
Okay.
If, if there's any reason that between now and then you think you might not be able to make it, it's important to let staff know so that if we, looks like we're not going to have a quorum, we can cancel with plenty of notice to our parties.
Okay, so that item will be on the 17th agenda?
A discussion, yes, yes.
Okay.
A discussion, and this discussion will, will, may possibly result in what? If you're going to the council for a vote, or... What I, I'm sorry, well, what I anticipate is, before staff engages in the amount of man-hours it would take for us to start a code amendment, we will seek city council and the city manager's advice in regards to this item, so there's a number of discussion items and research that we have to investigate when we move forward code items, we don't just introduce it, we have to look at statutory reasoning, we have to look at zoning designations, there's a lot that we have to consider, we have to consider the possibility, if you do something of this nature, what is that going to impact? Who's going to be the ones that's going to be most affected? And typically in those instances, it's always going to be a sensitive receptor, especially residences.
So you'll discuss this with council and see if it was, will be pursued?
At some point.
And if it is pursued, and we do have a discussion in these chambers by the commission, what happens then?
Well, I don't know yet, and it's not an agendized item, so we can discuss it, you know, on November 17th, maybe I'll have a better idea, I don't know, I don't know.
Ultimately, any code amendment is going to require a public hearing, notice public hearing before the commission, commission would make a recommendation on whether or not the code should be amended and how, that recommendation is forwarded to the city council, sorry, I haven't told, I need to speak into the mic more.
Amplified mic.
Amplified mic, as long as they don't sing, we're okay, for several reasons. So that recommendation would be forwarded to the city council, the city council would have to introduce the ordinance, and then the ordinance has to come forth, well, they'd have a public hearing, introduce the ordinance, vote to introduce it, and then have second reading, and then it would go into effect 30 days later. So it is a process, it's intended to be a process, so that the code doesn't get, change that right away, and there's plenty of opportunity for people to comment on it, and plenty of time for the community to study the issue, so...
Any other director's items?
Yes, the aquatic community poll, last month, city council did move forward and authorize the execution of a contractual agreement with Westburg and White, a architectural firm based in Orange County, they have a number of subcontractors that have, that is part of their team, for which they will study comprehensively, first through a proactive public outreach to reach the members of the community, get a better idea as to what are their thoughts... members of the community, get a better idea as to what are their thoughts, their suggestions on a community pool, what programs that they believe are noteworthy to continue with and to perhaps maybe expand. Locating appropriate sites in the city for which we can either look to acquire, but if it's a city property, then we won't have to worry about acquisition costs. So we're gonna, we'll start that relatively soon, probably in the next couple of months, where there will be the outreach. We'll create a website that also folks in the community can go on and provide their comments, suggestions, as it relates to the project. So we anticipate this project is massive in size, and it probably will take 12 to 18 months. By the time we conclude, we hope to successfully have achieved an adequate site, cost, labor that's involved, and then the next phase, which is actually preparation of plans for whatever it may be.
I'm sorry, so you're not anticipating a presentation to the council until 2016?
No, I did not say that.
You said 12 to 18-month process.
That's correct. I did not say, you know, presentations. If, in the increment process, we will keep the city council up to date in regards to workshops, the amount of meetings that they will have in the community. And when we get to the appropriate stage in presentation to the city council, then we will structure that accordingly pursuant to whatever hearing process is required.
When do you expect completion of this project, completion of the ROP?
Probably 12 to 18 months.
And what, and what will be the deliverable at the end of that 12-month?
So as, as staff stated, the end of the presentation of, to city council when that happens, the final presentation would show, we face to be ideally a site online, the acquisition cost if necessary, the size of a pool, whether it's above-ground or below-ground pool, the amount of program activities, the cost associated with that, who are managed, projection feasibility cost for yearly operation and maintenance, and whether there's projection for revenue or whether it goes balanced every year.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, any, any comments from the commissioners? Campbell, Sloan?
Can you give us the status on the pier, structurally now? How was, how was it surviving?
So we hired a structural and geotech engineering firm, Moffett &amp; Nickel. They will, within the next couple of weeks, start assessing the structural portion of the pier, the subsurface, the pilings and the bracing, to determine whether or not, based upon this last storm that we had, and the waves that, that pounded the area, as to whether or not there's any repairs that are necessary. So we feel it's safe to keep any of the pier closed for the time being while they conduct their assessment.
So it'll be done in about a month or so, and if things go well, it'll be open then in about a month.
We hope that the report, based upon their assessment, will be completed by then. If there are repairs, then that will be ongoing, but hopefully, you know, there aren't many repairs, if, if any at all.
When the, they had the bad rainstorms in 1989 that took out the pier, that also took out the Huntington Beach Pier, but they had insurance. We did not. They rebuilt with concrete pilings. We put up wood because we were self-insured. That's all we could afford.
Mr. Sloan?
I'm not, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Goldberg?
Thank you.
The AES plant, is that EIR out?
I haven't seen the draft EIR. I know that it is overseen by the Department of Energy, State of California, as the lead agency, but I haven't seen the draft.
I'm told that there's a, a copy of the draft in the Leisure World library. So do you think it might have been out to comment?
Don't know. They may have.
Think we can find out, because we might want to comment?
Well, so the facility, I've been to a number of the meetings already with the Department of Energy in regards to what they're proposing to do. It is probably a 12 to 15-year process to basically restructure their plant, to do away with their silos. The code generation requirements is to no longer backflow the water into our, into the channel that leads into the ocean. So they're under the responsibility of the state to create a energy-efficient operation that won't have the type of noise that's generated there now and the aesthetic appeals to it. It will probably be more of something that is acceptable of an office-type of look, if you will.
Your warehouse kind of thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, is this the plant that's in Long? That's adjacent to-
The DWP.
Leisure World?
Yeah.
Is that what that was, CWP plant?
There's two plants there.
Yes.
There's a DWP plant, it's the largest, with all the stacks. And it's the one north of that.
I think it's Heinz, and then there's the AES, and it's separated by the San Diego Channel.
AES is on the west side of the channel.
Heinz is also, both of them are.
There's two channels there.
Okay. But AES is west, to the west of, of-
Right, and Heinz is, is right below it. So they're both access opposite of the channel.
So to get back to the pier, the restaurant proposal, was there ever a decision made?
There has been no decision made regarding the pier restaurant. At this time, the city is focused on the structural issues with the pier, making sure that it's safe and secure, it's open to the public. So overall, currently no negotiations regarding the restaurant.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, meeting adjourned.